So I'm going to call the May 4, 2021, regular EWEB board meeting. I'm going to call it to session. And we're going to start off with an agenda check. Is there anybody that would like to say anything about the agenda? No, and I can't see everybody's screen and I don't have those three dots. So I don't know if everyone else is seeing everybody's screen, but I just see the big thing that says EWEB Board Meeting and some people at the bottom.
President Schlossberg, if you click on the small images on the bottom, it should bring up the board.
Got it. Yes. Okay. You would think by now that I would have figured that out. Okay, so nobody has anything but the agenda check. Great. Okay, and we will go along to item number two, items from board members and general manager. So I'm just going to call on people randomly because I don't even have everybody on my screen. So I'm going to start with Matt McCray.
Nothing for me. Thanks, Mindy.
Great. John Borowski.
Same. I have nothing to report this time.
John Brown.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of items. We had the quarterly OPEB meeting a week ago. I was able to attend portions of it, but it's good news to report. This is supplemental insurance for retirees. There's, I think, 536 retirees in the program, and it's one of the best reports that they've had. You know, in 2018, we contributed $2 million to it to back it up. This year, we're going to have to contribute about $214,000, based on what I wrote down. And according to staff, this is the lowest contribution they've ever seen before. The planned assets grew by about $850,000 over the year. They had real good investment results. So bottom line is, good, good report. The liability is $21.1 million. The assets are $20.1 million. And so we have $1 million unfunded liability, which, given the current state of things, that's really good. So a good report there. The other item is I've been getting a lot of phone calls about, can't EWEB do anything about water in Lieberg Canal? Because, you know, the salmon that went out four years ago are coming back and they can't get back into the fish ladder because there's no water coming down the canal through the fish ladder. And no, there's nothing we can do about it. But I do want to let people know there is a, if anybody is so inclined to volunteer opportunity, I'm going to do it in the month of June or May to help ODFW, the Department of Fish and Game. They have a salmon sorting facility on the side of Lieberg Dam where they're going to try and keep the hatchery fish and the wild fish separate so they don't get mixed up. Because that's part of the rule is they don't want certain species to go over the dam. And without the water going through Lieberg, it's really complicating the issues. And so volunteer opportunity for people if they want. It's not a fun job, but it's kind of different. But just thought I'd bring that up. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Sonia.
So John, let me just get this clear. You stand there and you sort fish? You pick up live fish and you put them in different? Okay, all right. Interesting.
They're big fish, too. They're big salmon. And actually, they'll have sorters there, but you help them. And you can do certain shifts. You can sign up at the Fish and Game Commission. And it'd be kind of fun. It's educational to see how that works.
I'd try it out. All right. Outside sorting fish. I love it. I don't have anything else. Thank you very much.
I just have one very, very small thing, and it's just a little leftover from our work session that we had a couple of weeks ago. And I was remiss in not thanking the people who put that on because I thought it worked really, really well. I have to say, I was pretty hesitant about how it was going to work, having some people in person and some people remote. So here is a belated thank you to everybody that made that happen. And Frank, you're up.
Thank you, President Schlossberg. Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Brown, one time, told me that sorting fish was the easiest fishing he'd ever done. Just so you know. I actually have two things this evening. One is I would like to start off with an announcement from the Northwest Public Power Association. On April 27, the NWPPA Awards Committee announced that former EWEB Commissioner Dick Helgason as a recipient of its Life Membership Award for 2021. This is presented to policymakers who have made notable contributions to the association and public power. And we're honored that Dick has been presented with this award for his many years of work with EWEB and within the industry. Just so you know, Dick Helgason started in 1978 as an employee of EWEB. And during his tenure, he held multiple management and leadership roles before retiring in 2009. And then he returned to public service in 2012 as a commissioner until his second retirement in December of last year. And so congratulations to Dick Helgason, who I know is listening in this evening. The award will actually be presented at the annual meeting of the Northwest Public Power Association in September. And so a big congratulations and a thank you to Dick Helgason. And I'm sure he may have a few things to say since he called in. We'll see. So thank you, Commissioner Helgason. The second note that I have, I would also like to thank U.S. Representative Peter DeFazio and his district manager, Dan Whalen, for the time they spent with a number of us up the Mackenzie Valley today, almost it seemed like all day. Along with, I'd also like to thank Carl Morganstern, Jason Huzer, Joe Moll of the Mackenzie River Trust, and Jared Waybright of the Mackenzie Watershed Council. It was a day well-spent, seeing firsthand the post-fire recovery efforts and discussing future plans for our critical watershed. It came together rather quickly, but it was great to spend time with Representative DeFazio and Dan Whalen. So thank you to them for that and those who participated. Those are my two items. President Schlossberg, back to you.
All right. Dick, I don't know if you're here, if you wanted to say a few words or not. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Well, that's okay. I will just be very brief and say that it's nice to hear all your voices and quite an honor to have you take the time to announce this award. I did ask Scott Corin, their manager, how I might continue to attend some of their meetings. And apparently, this was the only way that they could accomplish that. So it is quite an honor, and I look forward to being able to receive that award at the annual meeting. Thanks for taking time for the acknowledgement, Frank and board members. That's it.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you, Dick. It's nice to hear your voice. Okay, but we are moving right along. And we are on Agenda Item Number Three, Public Inputs. So we have, I think, we just have one caller and then one public input reading. But when your name is called, remember to unmute your call. Press * six if calling from a landline or simply use the unmute button if calling from your cell phone. Please state your name and optionally your address or ward and speak clearly into the telephone. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present their testimony. Please keep track of time. I'll try to give you a little warning, too. And after all testimony is heard, each commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy, we do not engage in a back-and-forth dialogue. Please note that failure of a commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a speaker and the board does not provide an answer, an EWEB staff member will contact the speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time. The public testimony period for this meeting is now open. And we have Stephen Anderson via telephone. And after that, Joe Harwood will read on behalf of Tony Daher. So Stephen, you are up.
Yes, Stephen Anderson, Ward Two, on behalf of myself and many others. We want the EWEB Board to know what it feels like to us and many citizens that we have been lied to and railroaded on the East 40th Water Project. Last year, we were invited to an adjacent property owner's meeting concerning the water tank project just before the COVID shutdown. We were told EWEB was in a hurry to build one tank immediately as the tank on College Hill is a life-threatening hazard if we have an earthquake. And we're long overdue for catastrophic quake, as we all know. And EWEB is supposed to decommission it by 2023. At the meeting, we were shown two tank sites. We immediately identified a problem with Tank Site One, which is not only right on top of our neighbor on a property of more than 10 acres, but also requires the removal of some of the biggest trees in South Eugene, an irreplaceable habitat for hundreds of birds and animals. We registered our dismay, asking the tank sequence be reversed. And we're given platitudes about how it's all very fluid, et cetera, as if there was hope you would change direction and build the first tank on Site Two, the most obvious location if you're truly in a hurry. Later, we were told no decision would be made until a geologic study was completed. And we watched the cores come out of the test holes, which confirmed exactly that Tank Site Two is the easiest and fastest to excavate. Yet, EWEB excuses do not change the tank sequence began to pile up. Some of us have worked in construction and forestry and can refute every single justification we were given for clearing all of the trees for both sites now and building on Tank Site One first. Then, most shocking of all, the general manager stated, again after we protested, "Well, maybe we'll just build both tanks now." Are you kidding us? Your entire tank sequencing plan is out the window because of our protesting? You're going to subject South Eugene to almost two years of additional heavy construction and leave College Hill's dangerous tank hanging over that neighborhood? According to EWEB's own engineers, it's expected to fail in an earthquake. And what will your liability be then? College Hill's residents should be outraged at all of this because it's apparent that we caused this, trying to save our neighborhood habitat as long as possible, trees older than Eugene, for God's sake. And one last question. Do the citizens of South Eugene have any idea what is in store now? An extra year and a half with hundreds of extra gravel trucks, cement trucks, and construction equipment rolling down Hilliard Street around two very dangerous curves, past Tuckman Park, which is always full of kids, clogging our already overburdened streets? Two years of construction and one tank makes sense. What you approved is insanity. This is not an engineering decision. This is a political decision. You need to rescind your endorsement, build one tank on Site Two. That is the best thing for EWEB and the neighborhoods. This is a legacy project, you say.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Your legacy will be infamous, and we will never forgive or forget.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Next, we have public input reading by Joe Harwood on behalf of Tony Daher. Don't know if I'm pronouncing that right.
Thank you, President Schlossberg. Please bear with me as I work my way through this text. It's a bit muddled. Subject line is extra electricity storage. The customer did not give a ward or neighborhood. As an electric company, you can use this for extra electricity storage in the form of ammonia that can be used to make electricity or can be used as fertilizer. There is a company in Ontario, Canada, that has a patent to produce ammonia from air and water and electricity. It is called Green NH3. It can replace oil for sea shipping, airlines, trucks, even cars and energy storage or extra electricity storage. The website is greennh3.com. It was acquired by an American company known as Fuel Positive Corporation. The website is www.eestcorp.com. This may be a good plan for your Green New Deal. Ammonia does not release carbon and does not pollute, and it can replace hydrogen in fuel cell cars. It's a good way to store hydrogen. Thank you.
All right. The public testimony period for this meeting is now closed. And now we have a chance if any of the commissioners would like to comment. So you can raise your hand. I can see you all if you would like to comment. All right. I don't see anybody wishing to comment tonight. Okay. Thank you. We are now moving on to board action items. Agenda item number four, which is Approval of Consent Calendar A.
I'm moved to adopt Consent Calendar A.
Second.
Right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Consent Calendar A is unanimously approved. Agenda item number five, Approval of Consent Calendar B.
Moved to adopt Consent Calendar Item B.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, that was unanimously approved as well. Great. Moving along here. Moving on to general business items. Agenda item number seven, Reserve Fund Status and Transfer Use of Reserves. Over to you, Deborah Bleep.
Right. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. We're here this evening with our annual discussion on reserve transfers. Normally, Aaron Ballmer, the General Accounting Supervisor, who actually did write the accompanying backgrounder, would be here with me. However, he was unable to be here tonight. And Matthew Miller has graciously offered to fill in. Slide. Thank you. Our agenda this evening is short. Matthew was going to give a brief overview and then provide some recommendations for reserve transfers. And the remainder of the time is for board discussion and direction. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Matthew.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, I'll give a little bit of an introduction of myself so you know something about me. I've been working at EWEB for about a year and a half. Prior to EWEB, I was working in public accounting. And I work primarily on the water utility side. And I also manage cash and investments for the combined utility. And I'm excited to be here to give you an overview of EWEB's cash reserves. So EWEB's reserve targets and the way reserves are used are guided by EWEB's financial policies. There are several different categories of policies and associated reserves. The rate sufficiency policy consists of working cash. Working cash targets are based on the amount of cash needed to pay for ongoing operational expenditures and to provide an amount of working capital to support the day's cash ratio sufficient to maintain a higher-than-average credit rating. EWEB uses a threshold of greater than 150 days to calculate the target based on guidance and input from rating agencies. The rate stability policy consists of several different reserves. The operating reserve exists to smooth out the effects of revenue shortfalls or unforeseen expenses. For example, restoration costs resulting from extreme weather events such as winter storms or wildfires. The self-insurance reserve is used to fund out-of-pocket liability costs of third-party claims. The rate stabilization fund exists to smooth the impact of rate increases to customers and to reduce future borrowing requirements. The capital improvement policy consists of the capital improvement reserve, which exists to maintain EWEB's assets such that EWEB can provide reliable, high-quality service to customers and generally equals about one year of depreciation expense. The pension reserve is based on policy that requires that if annual pension expense is below budget, then the difference shall be moved to the reserve. Policy also guides how reserves will be replenished should they fall below target, including the order of precedence and length of time allowed to replenish a reserve. I'm pleased to say that at 1231, all reserves were at or above target. Next slide please. Although working cash is above target for both utilities, there are several items to consider that will likely bring working cash closer to target in 2021. The Holiday Farm and Riverside fires. There are ongoing repairs to EWEB infrastructure, and FEMA reimbursement is not expected until later in the year at the earliest. In the Mackenzie Watershed Recovery, the board approved a budget of $3.95 million to be funded through the watershed recovery fee. Due to timing of implementation, however, only about $1 million is expected to be collected from the fee in 2021, leaving a $3 million shortfall that will be funded from working cash. We'd like to point out that this is expected to be a timing issue only and to be fully recruited through the recovery fee over the life of the fee. There's emergent capital work with both utilities that beyond all is budgeted and transferred to the capital improvement reserve for 2021. And one other item that's routine but is coming up is the August debt service payment. This is one of the larger payments for the utility and will total about $15 million for 2021. And it's primarily funded by working cash. Next slide, please. So for the water utility, we are recommending a $9 million transfer to the rate stabilization fund along with the required pension reserve transfer. The rate stabilization transfer amount is limited by the debt service coverage ratio of the water utility. This transfer will maintain a cushion in working cash for the previously mentioned cash outflows while also setting aside funds to smooth future rate impacts and reduce future borrowings. Next slide, please. On the electric side, we're not recommending any transfers beyond the required pension reserve transfer. And with that, I'll hand it back to Deborah to wrap things up.
Thank you, Matthew. So again, tonight, we're here for board direction and to answer questions. And then we'll bring back a resolution requesting board approval of reserve transfers at the June 1 meeting. Unless I hear otherwise, we'd anticipate that that would come to you all on Consent Calendar.
Great. So I think you're opening it up for questions now, right, Deborah? Okay. Great. Sonia, we'll start with you.
I just want to say thank you for answering the question about the rate stabilization fund in regard to the reserve transfers. That all made sense to me, so I'm in support of moving the money over and look forward to having the resolution next month. Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions? John Borowski.
Thank you. You mentioned that in August, there's a big debt service of about $15 million. And you said that comes out of working cash. Do you know the breakdown between of the electric side and the water side? Because I see electric side working cash, we have $10 million. But our electric side, we have $41 million. And water, we have $10 million. Do you know how much of the debt is coming out from each one of those funds?
The electric payment is about $15 million, correct, Matthew?
Annually, yes. I don't have the exact August numbers because we make an interest payment in February and then we make an interest and principal payment in August. But it's roughly $5 million for water, $15 million for electric for the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, John Brown or Matt?
I don't have any questions. I'll just say thanks for the presentation and the materials for making this clear and understandable. And thank you to the whole team for keeping this organization financially healthy. It's a remarkable place to be, to walk in onto a board and see a situation like this. So thank you all.
I have nothing. Thank you. I just, I too have experienced when this wasn't the situation. And we're wondering how we're going to get things going. And I'm very, very pleased with staff, both current and past, that have gotten into the situation. So thank you.
I have one more quick question, President Schlossberg. Can you tell me what our bond rating is? You said we have a good bond rating. Do you know if it is at 1, AA? Where are we at?
Each utility has a separate bond rating and they're a little bit different with each ratings agency, but generally AA. It's AA across the board.
Thank you.
Great. I don't have anything other than a big thank you for helping us. This is maybe a corny pun, but weather the storm. COVID could have been really devastating in many ways. And I am just really glad that we are in this strong financial position. So thank you.
President Schlossberg, given that there were not substantial recommendations, we will bring that back on the consent calendar next month as opposed to a separate action, if that's permissible by you.
Yep. That sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that was very easy. Okay, so I have a question because if we are done with that, we are really cruising ahead at this meeting. And we are at a point where we're supposed to take a break, but the break is not supposed to be till 7:05. So are people okay, just powering through? Yeah?
Cruising.
Great. Okay. Great. And we will go on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is the Quarterly Strategic and Operational Report for the First Quarter of 2021.
Well, President Schlossberg, thank you. Good evening again, Commissioners. Paulie, go ahead and advance the slide, please. We appreciate the opportunity to present the quarterly report. Assistant General Manager Rod Price and I will go through a high-level representation of the quarterly report, of which you got in advance. It's approximately 60 pages. And so we're not going to go through 60 pages worth. As you can see from the topics listed, you'll also note on this particular presentation that on the right-hand side, that's our new customer bill presentment that the board got a preview of in the first quarter, specifically in February. And so we are excited about that coming here in the second quarter at some time. And that'll be talked about a little bit later. Go ahead with the next slide, please. Just a few items of significance, just at a high level. You know, first of all, we indoctrinated two new commissioners who were willing to invest a significant amount of time, both after they took office and before, orienting themselves to the utility and our operations. And we think that's, and hopefully, they will agree. It's been a smooth transition for us. And so thank you to the two new commissioners, Borowski and McCray. We do continue to operate under COVID protocols. There's optimism around immunizations, of course. But there are also some new county restrictions and sort of the ever-changing advice from health authorities as we go forward. And it's been, it's been interesting to look at some of our results in that context. We made significant progress in the initial watershed recovery efforts that we started last fall based on this board's passing of an emergency funding source to get that going. We also, the board passed a landmark resolution, really, establishing the ongoing funding for watershed recovery separate from our traditional watershed protection. And so that was, that was really very significant. We also made some progress in our understanding of the Lieberg Canal repair costs and as well as did a significant amount of public outreach and communications with the water storage projects. Go ahead with the next slide, please. Besides being an eye test, this was, we knew you got the slides ahead of time. And so this is just a reminder of the goals that were approved by the board in January. And so go ahead with the next slide. And before I hand the And before I hand the presentation baton off to Rod Price, who will discuss in detail goal number one and goal number two, it is worth noting that we made progress in the first quarter. Mind you that it's early in the pursuit of these annual milestones and quite a number of these have specifically scheduled updates planned for the board over the next few months. We are in the midst of a number of planning related items. Goal number four is, is a very significant amount of effort involving the board and anything from wildfire mitigation plans to multi-year COSSs and pricing. And so we're, we're setting up those conversations. I will note also on goal number three, we had a a work session last month. My plan is to come back to the board. We have another work session in May with some specific plan and policy proposals for your consideration and your debate and discussion. That's based on your feedback from both a planning session in February as well as the, some of the discussions that we had around energy and carbon last month. Usually this is an iterative process and so I don't expect this to be, here's a proposal asking for your approval. This will be a proposal asking for your debate and counsel and discussion. And we'll look forward to that session on May 18th. And so that's my plan is to bring something forward to the board for that discussion. At this point, you can kind of see that we are making progress. Lots of things coming up over the next couple of months to interact with the board on these specific items. I will turn it over for some operational updates specifically related to goal number one and goal number two to the Assistant General Manager Rod Price, who will take it from the next slide. Rod?
Thank you, Frank. Good evening, commissioners. And as a longtime Star Wars fan, I just have to get it off my chest, may the fourth be with you. But you're probably not interested in Star Wars, so let's move to safety. I wanted to highlight a few things from our operational report. And a couple of things on the safety and wellness front I wanted to really particularly highlight is from the health and wellness team in the first quarter developed some really good tools that align with the state and county metrics to, to help EWEB in its pandemic response. And the cool thing about that is a number of outside agencies have asked us to share their work and tools with them. And so a handful of folks have actually been adopting it outside the agency, outside of EWEB, excuse me. So a lot of those tools, the safety program manager Lance Hughes is also able to line up vaccines for EWEB employees starting in mid-April, which was also very nice and very convenient for EWEB folks. So hats off to that program. The other thing I'd like to highlight about our safety program is we've been doing a good catch program, which is a sort of a proactive thing where employees can turn in ideas and submit near misses and things like that that might help scope out trouble before it starts. And we've not had that great of success to this point. That changed this year and the numbers are going up. We're having a lot of input come in now. So, so that's really encouraging, I think, for our safety and wellness program. One of the things I want to talk about a little bit is finance. We had a lot of uncertainty in 2020, economy and, you know, based in COVID, climate concerns, all these things. And so we ended up budgeting fairly conservatively in 2021. Deb, I think, would say, I can't remember how she exactly phrased it, but there's cautious optimism. We are right now seeing net favorable incomes in both the water and electric. So I think that's a good sign for, for the area's economy. Another thing that was buried down in the quarterly report that may not have been as obvious was I wanted to just kind of do a quick shout out to the communications and marketing team. They reorganized a bit. Jen Connors was appointed the supervisor for the group. But, and they've added some staff. But what I really wanted to talk about is they're making a great big difference in our projects, especially the ones that are public safety and like public facing, like the McKenzie River Restoration Project and the 40th Street Betors. They've just done a great amount of work for us and that takes a lot of burden off of the the engineering and operations side when, when they can really step in and help. So hats off to them. Thank you. I also wanted to mention, I'm not sure it was in the report yet, but there was a year-long process to, to go through the sale of the wanted generating station. And that was completed near the end of the quarter. That resulted in a $3 million for EWEB and our partners. So, and we received about half of that. And also a little shout out to IS department here, some fun facts that were not shown in the quarterly report. They've also been reorganizing and really working on prioritizing their, their work. But in the background, a lot of folks have been really humming along and doing some things like making sure we get 20,000 emails and making sure we get 3 million minutes on our teams, like even for this virtual meeting. So patching, patching is critical. We've had 500 cyber vulnerabilities addressed through 896 patches among them. So all good work going on. Next slide, please, Holly. So in the past, we've reported mostly on our quarterly successes. And so this year, I'm also going to take some time to note areas of concern. So one of the areas of concern is that it's a trend that you'll see highlighted on these four bullet points in one way or another, which is we're having some challenges with our metrics based on obtaining and holding skilled FTD. So one of the examples on the first line, there's the electric, the struggle that the electric design staff is having, getting customer work out. And we've had basically the turnaround time. We've got a metric of trying to turn around work in three, three weeks or so. Right now, our metric's around seven to eight weeks. So to mitigate that, what we've done is focus all of our tech work right now on customer work. So some of the techs that were working on EWEB internal capital, those have been shifted over to work on, on customer work. So we make sure we can, we can serve the customers first. For current relicensing is another example, though. Both technical staff and operations staff shortages are slowing down our ability to review designs and keep up with some of the commitments. Now, we're doing pretty good overall in both of these areas, but we do see some concerns. I think noted too in the, in the quarterly report, pretty detailed was we're a little behind in our tree trimming about six months. And so we have a five-year program, so it's not a great cause for panic or anything. And we are still maintaining all our fire protection circuits. But there's just a high demand for tree crews in the West Coast for all the other wildfire mitigation that's going on. So it's going to be a bit before we get back up to speed on that. And then the other area that's being hit a little bit is the water department. So AMI metering installations is interfering a little bit with some of our routine maintenance tasks. And so we need to do a better job in the AMI project and resourcing that, the meter installs. One of the things I'll note real quick is I'm going to go into some more detail on goal two in the capital report. So at this point, I'll just stop and sniff and solve. Any questions?
Go ahead. We'll start with John Borowski.
Yeah. The staffing was the thing that jumped out to me in this report. You know, when I went and looked at the electricity metrics, a lot of the, a lot of the ones where, that we clicked yellow were because of staffing. I know that that's, that is something that I'm dealing with in my industry, but I wasn't so keyed in that it would be affecting all different industries, especially ones that, that are technical like EWEBS. Can you just talk to what, what type of strategies we're doing to try and recruit and retain qualified employees?
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's a couple of things going on here. One is that in the, there's just not a lot of people going into some of the technical areas like metering and engineering. And so the pool's low to draw from to begin with. Another struggle we're finding is that Eugene's not quite the draw that some other areas are because I think Lena calls it trailing spouses. It's difficult to get a job. And then also it's difficult to find housing right now for, for young families coming in. So, so there's some things that we're trying to address a little bit, but we're working with HR and Lena and her team to see if we can't get a little bit more creative about how to attract staff, how to bring, bring them in, what levels to bring people in. We're also trying to prioritize work and do with what we can and align with the strategic plan and to meet some of the challenges. But, but it's tough. We've, we've been looking for meter shop folks for several years, engineers for several years. And it's just a buyer's market, I guess you'd call it, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Borowski, I would add just elaborate a little bit on what Rod said. There's, this is not COVID-related, certainly. It's the fact that you also start with an industry that typically does not have a lot of voluntary turnover. People, when they get to a utility, they tend to like, like the utility generally. And so you, you see some turnover through retirements and other things. But, you know, recruiting to Eugene from other utilities is a challenge, especially right now when, try and find a house. Even if you can afford it, try and find one. It's incredibly difficult to, to bring people in. And, and I would say that it's, it's also concentrated with several very kind of unique positions. Metering is one, some of the engineering field. So we're trying to get more creative and trying to build some of those even some homegrown, you know, organically as well through various programs.
All right. John Brown, did you have a question for Rod?
I did, Rod. I haven't gone through this before when we were getting robbed by all our IT people from the big debt companies. And they were just buying their way and robbing everybody of EWEB. I understand your dilemma. I read the same thing John read about some of these positions being open for over a year. That said, I think, you know, you'll do the best you can to get there. But I'm just wondering, what's not getting done? If these positions are open and they're there. I know we're behind. We've tripled the turn time for, you know, design engineering and because my ears ring daily on that. But what else is not getting done that should be getting done? I mean, how far, if we've had these positions open for a year, are we going to continue to get a backlog? Because, you know, the growth is continuing and the demand is continuing. When, when is a breaking point? We're going to get worse and worse, aren't we, without filling these positions?
Well, one of the things we're doing too that I didn't mention is we, we're starting to work closer with consultants. And so working with consultants is a good strategy regardless of the staffing levels. So we can hopefully maintain and dig into those, those backlogs. But basically the work that's not getting done, there's, as I mentioned, the internal EWEB capital replacement program. It's starting to be a little behind in the electric. And we'll see that. We'll talk about that a little bit more probably in June in the capital plan. And we've talked about AG systems and similar things, but it's, it is a struggle, but we I mentioned, by shifting, we'll come back.
Commissioner Brown, I would also say that there's, there's two trade-offs that we kind of constantly have to, two dials, I guess, we have to constantly turn. One is the, the trade-offs between O and M and capital. There are risks associated with both. Some are more near-term, some are longer term. And so we, we have to adjust between those two types of project work. And then Rod will talk a little bit about it when he gets to the capital update here in a few minutes. And that's, remember, we have categories. We have compulsory, we have strategic, and then we have risk-based. The risk-based are the ones that maybe are of a timeframe that we can determine. It's really, that's the part of the dial that we can turn more than sort of the have-to projects. And those are the ones that tend to get turned up or down to catch up or adjust on the O and M side. So when it gets to that part of the capital plan, that'll be the part that, where you, you'll, you'll look at different projects that, you know, we might replace transformers at a certain rate and we slow that rate down or we speed that rate up. It's all an issue of risk. And so that's where we tend to make our adjustments.
Okay, thank you. And on AMI deployment, I thought we passed a contract a while ago for $12 million to basically sub it out, the installation. And I wondered how that's going, if we're still getting behind on AMI deployment.
Yeah, so that's, that contract's for electric deployment, not for water. So, and I will talk about that a little bit more. I've got a slide on that coming up in the capital report.
Thank, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Matt or Sonia, do you have other questions before Rod moves on? Okay. Go ahead, Rod.
We want to go to the capital report.
Oh, that was, sorry, I thought, I didn't realize that was the wrap-up of the.
That was it, but I'll still answer questions if fun.
Yeah, I would, I would just like, before we get to Rod's capital, I would just, you know, it's, it's, the way that we describe that first goal sometimes internally when we talk about it, it's, you know, we want to make sure that the train, you know, it's great to do all these strategic things, but we want to make sure the train is still on the tracks. And, you know, we're, the train is not off the tracks, but we're feeling some vibration in the wheels. And so those are the kinds of things that, that it's why you have KPIs, why you have indicators, why you look at, and our, we're going to change our report around a little bit to be more of a series of dashboards so we can, we can actually get, get readings of this. But I would describe it that we're feeling a little vibration in the wheels. The, the train is still on the tracks, but we've, we've got to make some adjustments and grease some skids and, and make some adjustments as we go forward. And that's how I would describe our kind of first quarter read from an operational perspective.
Yeah, I would agree to that. I think that in highlighting a few things here that, that we're paying attention to because of metrics, it's really important. We've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of things going really well. So I'm not ready to push any panic buttons or anything. I just wanted to highlight some things that we are trying to focus on and get better at.
I would say, given the year that we've had, it would be remarkable and even a little weird if there weren't some areas that we needed to work on. Sonia, go ahead.
I'm curious if any of the delays or anything, if you've had any supply chain issues.
No, not too much. Definitely seeing the signals that pricing is going up, you know, big jumps, 10, 15% kind of things. I don't know if the, dang, I should have talked to Sarah before this. That would have been a good deal. But I'll, I'll get you some more information on that. We'll, I'll check into Sarah.
As we start going into budgeting and such, just starting to see those swings, so.
Our contract, I would say our contract escalation has been pretty well under control. I know we've had a few issues with materials related to the Carmen Smith project. Some of that is towards specialized equipment coming out of the Far East, which has been a little bit of a concern. But Sarah can maybe elaborate just on general lead times a little further. This would be the time to do it.
Yeah, so your timing is good. We, actually this week, we've gotten several notices from some of our suppliers indicating that we will be expecting longer lead times. And that will, of course, also impact price. We, we've worked with our key project managers to try to get ahead of the materials for especially our construction season coming up for this summer to get those materials ordered early. And if we need to look for alternative sources or alternatives approached, alternative approaches to doing the work. So we are working with our contractors to really get the materials that we need early and have it available. But at this point, we haven't had any direct impacts where we haven't had materials required, that we require for projects.
Okay. All right. Great. Yeah, I appreciate.
Okay. All right, great. Yeah, I appreciate that you're all staying ahead of that and looking out in the future. What the it's hard in an organization that big too to foresee which is going to be the linchpin that's going to be pulled out. But thank you for that update.
All right, any more comments on the quarterly strategic update before we move on to the capital project update? Nope. All right, we are really speeding along this meeting. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I guess we're gonna get out of here early. So we're moving on to agenda item number 10, capital project update.
Well, I can slow it down a little bit if you want, because I could talk all night about some of this stuff. So um I just wanted to real quick, the um part of the purpose for this presentation is to help set some background um on where we're at with our our capital plan right now. Uh we'll be coming back to the board as part of the long term financial plan. You know, there's a 10 year CIP conversation, some of those kind of things. So um really, the purpose here is to sort of set some of the the stage and baseline support for that. So I I do have um Wally um Nicole and uh the Water Engineering Supervisor, who's the one that that masterminds the uh water capital plan. Um and then Tyler Nice, the Electric Division Manager, who uh was the brainchild behind the Electric Capital Plan, um or at least the ringleader, maybe not the brainchild, but they'll join me at the end of the the presentation to answer uh questions. So uh next slide, please. So uh I think this will be a refresher for some Frank alluded to it, but it might be new uh to the uh to new uh commissioners. So several years ago, uh Wally came up with this way to uh categorize our our capital work into three main areas. Now, you know, these three main areas are not um accepted accounting practices or anything like that, but there are some engineering judgments around categories that help us line up to have conversations and and um make priorities and and figure out spending amounts, that kind of thing. So um what you will see is uh that these categories are represented by name and color in most of the conversations you'll see going ahead about capital. And even O and M to some extent, we we're starting to use the same terms as Frank kind of alluded to. But the three main uh categories really are compulsory, um which is kind of what it sounds like. These are the things you have to do. They're they're fixed timelines. They're they're driven by our our obligation to serve. Uh you know, think federal requirements, etc., things like that. So it's sort of our our baseline noting, if you will. Uh the strategic category is is more of the executive strategic plan, board level kind of of projects. And so um Carmen Smith relicensing decision, you know, back at some point, we we decided we'd relicense uh Carmen Smith because it made sense for this, that, or the other reason. AMI, perhaps uh second water treatment plant source can can be a strategic uh example as well. Uh risk based, uh and and Frank was talking about this a little bit, so here's some links to O and M. But risk base is more staff driven, so we have a a big slew of projects kind of sitting there with with things to do to um address age of system. It's more flexible. Um and it's more in the preventative nature, but you know, substation rebuilds, uh pump station rebuilds, that kind of thing. I put the enterprise IT systems upgrades into that too as well. Um one of the things that just happened was most of the servers are are in the process or have been um replaced. And that's a big chunk of money. So next slide, please. So here's just to give you a flavor of what that means in our our capital plan. Um I kind of like to talk about the capital plan in two ways. There's the size of the pie, which is if you look at water, the size is 21. And then there's the, you know, how big's the slices of of pie? And so um in both pies, if you will, uh AMI, for instance, is 15% of the strategic uh uh or actually, it's 15% of the total uh pie. And that comprises most of the 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 strategic category in water, um and some of it in electric. So that's just to kind of give you an idea of of right now, how we budgeted for this year, risk based and and strategic and compulsory. So as as you move projects in and out um and delays and whatever, uh hopefully the risk base there uh is able to come in and and be the more more or less the shock absorber, if you will, between extra and um taking away money too as well, uh in order to to try and meet our our budgets for the year. So uh next slide, please. So this is straight out of the quarterly report. Uh it shouldn't be too surprising for you. Hopefully, you've seen this, but uh these are really typical quarter one graphs on spending. Um they're usually um in the quarter, first quarter, it's pretty light in spending. So you'll see the curve starts out fairly slow. Um and usually by the end of the year, it works its way up in more of a curved sort of fashion, not not following a linear straight line. But um one of the things that um that happens with the capital planning is that not like O and M, which is fairly steady, uh there's big projects that extend across multiple years, budget years. And so the disclaimer on water right there is, hey, we're gonna spend 100% of our money, but it could depend on the timing of of how our 40th Street Reservoir construction uh ends. Um we're still in the process of doing some planning and all that. And so we don't know exactly how that's gonna end. There's a fair amount of certainty, or or Wally wouldn't have put 100%, but um I think you get that idea. And another good example on electric, uh Frank alluded to a supply problem from the uh uh the Carmen Smith relicensing. We had to defer the unit two joint uh replacement um that was scheduled for this year because the the manufacturer couldn't meet specs and and we've had to go around and around and around with them and it caused a year delay. So $5 million went from this year to next year. So that's represented there in that under spend. One of the things I'll note about that um is that we have a group, and again, Wally and Tyler are the ones that head these groups, that they meet periodically, sometimes once a month, sometimes once a quarter uh with all the supervisors. And and we'll talk about where we're at with spending and how we can manage those projects around. So and our goal really is to to spend what we say we're gonna spend. Because I I like to keep my friend depth part very happy. Next slide, please. So I just want to kind of uh touch bases with this uh concept a little bit here. So water um basically is a 10 year plan. Um we are regulated um to to have a a master plan. And basically, the master plan helps shape their their capital plan moving ahead. But they also have a uh a a strategy that leads to our our overall strategic plan of building resilience. And so uh you can just kind of see, you know, we started down the checklist there of of uh of our projects. Next slide, please. So an overview of what's happening this year in the water department. There's a picture of on the far right, the some transmission line work that's being done down on the riverfront to take advantage of the all the construction that's going on down there for the development and the riverfront park and that kind of thing. If you remember, we came to you last uh month with a uh second contract to to basically double the work here on this pipeline. And that was due to some deficiencies uh in having this contractor keep moving on down the line to to do some more work. Which is really good. So uh we doubled the work in that area. And so we're gonna have to take away a little bit of work in in some of the areas, other areas, and and put that uh work in the next year's budget. So um some other work, obviously, you're familiar with the 40th Street Reservoir um upgrade. One of the other things that we've been doing is main upgrades. Um if you notice the metric in the quarterly report for leagues per mile, there's this higher than the national average. So one of the things we're doing is is increasingly focused on that risk based uh category to to do some more main replacements. And so that means the the percentage is not getting greater so much, but the slice of the part of the size of the pie might be a bit higher. Um next slide, please. So in electric uh transmission distribution, uh right now, this year is kind of catch up and life extension kind of work. A lot of type one substation kind of work downtown. It's picture of the in the middle there of the network protector being lowered into the vault for some of the new construction going on down town. Some telecom work, fiber expansions, Mount Hagan rebuild. The if you remember, Mount Hagan's was one of the facilities that was destroyed in the holiday farm fire. Um so we're we're working on rebuilding that. Next slide, please. In electric generation, the uh main themes are common licensing and Stone Creek um rebuild and dam safety. Uh again, it wasn't all a farm fire, but the uh the Stone Creek facility is served by a transmission line that was uh burned and um up up out of Portland area. And so part owners with that transmission line with with not Bonneville, but Portland general. So this summer, we're gonna go back in and rebuild it up to to code and snow. And the uh Carmen, some Carmen work there, two pictures. The one on the left is a transmission line. You can kind of see three poles uh on the left hand side, they're moving the transmission line over to the right. You'll see a single monopole. Uh that's a new design. Um so basically those um I mean, this has been a project since I was supervisor 15 years ago, or whatever it was, that's been on the books. So the the idea is to move the transmission lines out of the 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 watershed, the creek area. Wow. And the middle picture is just a a picture of the spawning beds that um are being re reestablished there. There's a spawning channel right below Trail Bridge. A lot of work in that. One of the things that I I threw a couple of pictures in here, some dam safety work that's probably right now more O and M, but a lot of times those dam safety projects identify capital work. And they also um tend to take up some of the same resources that that are done used for for capital. So there's a big intertwine between capital and O and M in in most of our departments that that's pretty similar with. Next slide, please. Um couple uh major areas in the shared service area. So these are our uh groups that share both uh electric accounting and and water accounting. So so we call them the shared services. There's an 80 20 split, I think, 80% and 20% I think is what it is right now. Um but uh IS has been uh very active in some very big projects, CEI and AMI, I'll talk about in a couple of minutes. Um you know, mobile workforce, um all the stuff that that uh allows us to again to have these virtual meetings where dogs are barking in the background. And um there's still a number of smaller projects planned for this year. You can see what they are there. This is one of the uh supply chain things that uh we did uh have identified already uh to Commissioner Carlson's point. Uh fleet. So we normally spend one to $2 million a year refurbishing our fleet in a sort of periodic way. Sounds like a lot of money, but every truck's worth 400,000 or 500,000, so it doesn't take much. Um but what uh what I'm being told is there's the lead times are 22, 24 months, some of these kind of things. And then pricing is going at 10, 15% that um as well. So uh it's likely we'll be bringing you some some consent items in the fall around the fleet. Big news in the buildings and land area uh category is the Roosevelt Burrison property. Uh we're still in due diligence on being able to purchase that. I I hope that will wrap up in in late August or so, late summer. Next slide, please. And uh here's the the AMI program uh overview. John, you asked about um John Brown, uh Commissioner Brown, the water deployment. So we uh if you remember, we separated the um water deployment from the electric deployment. And water is on a five year track and uh electric is on a three year track. And so to catch us up uh or to get the the electric meters installed in three years, we hired a a contractor. The contractor EPA started in April. They're doing great. They're hitting their targets. We should be uh installed um with most of our meters by Q1 um 2022. Water, though, uh uh we are struggling to to staff the uh the meter shop and it not to anybody's fault or anything. Um but one of the priorities for the upcoming month or so here is to to boost some uh FTE support in that area. Um lots of other things going on. It's a big project, a lot of cross provisional support, IS, uh meter to cash, so billing, customer service, a lot of folks uh involved in this. I think one of the big things, uh probably the biggest thing we'll work on on the moving ahead in the next couple of months to six months is, you know, we have a new uh asset in place now with all these uh electronic meters. And then how are we gonna deal with that from a as a standpoint of maintenance and repair and um warehousing? And then there's all kinds of things um that that we need to figure out how to operationalize uh the the new equipment we're all fit in. So there's the big effort going on there. And again, under my fun fact kind of um uh things here, I just kind of threw it up. So right now, we've had as of probably a week ago when this was posted, over 700,000 billing leads um with a 98.99% accuracy. So uh Frank volunteered this morning. When we hit a million, he's gonna throw a pizza party. So we'll all be down at uh uh Commissioner Barowski's having pizza uh when we hit 1 million. So uh I will hold him to that. It's now on public record. Next slide, please. Um last project I want to talk about, it's a little less obvious as a maybe as a capital project, but um and and Frank talked about this uh at the very beginning, but customer experience improvement project. And so this is starting to wrap up. This is really exciting, I think. Um one of the things that we just got done doing, uh or we're still in the process, I guess, was uh we did a soft launch. And so it's a control and testing of 22 E-Web employees, including myself and a couple of customers um to test the system. Um and it it is really cool. In fact, it's so cool, it's kind of boring. Uh sorry, Rachel. But it works, you know, it just kind of does the things you're all expecting systems to do now. So uh it's got a lot of good stuff. But again, to quote Rachel, we we have to get this right. We we cannot uh release it until it's ready. Um and so there's uh a process right now we're going through to finalize and make sure it was ready to do this between. And I promised I wouldn't say I'd go live on on air. So I would not. So next slide, please. So this is the the part of the um at the end here, where we can talk a little bit. So uh I keep alluding to this idea that we, you know, we can add spending and 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 uh change spending and and adjust projects, that kind of thing. Um when we come to talk to you in in June, I believe, about the uh proposed the capital plan for the next 10 years, uh we'll probably bring some of these ideas in. Uh we're gonna continue to to do the investments that we've already made in compulsory and strategic programs. Um but we're gonna probably talk about turning the dial a little bit. And so what does that mean? Um uh the water treatment second source, for instance, you know, we'll 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 have a look at that and and talk about scope a little bit and what it might mean. Um electric reliability is in terms of uh how it relates to the age of system. You know, we can we can spend a lot of money and become really reliable, or you can spend no money and and lose reliability. And so these are just some choices that that you make. And and hopefully, we do it with some knowledge. So um Travis will can able be coming to talk to you some more about some enterprise systems and some IS spending um as well. Some of the risks I see right now, and and this is not a a limited list of of risks to the capital plan, but uh Leiber Canal, uh obviously, it's out of service and FERC is expecting us to do something. So we're just throwing out a a figure right now of 25 to 50 million. Um and that those are big swings, though, um to to get the canal back to the point where it it's meeting the the license. This is a little different than the the conversation around, you know, do we relicense in 20 years? Or do we use this as a uh a water canal or only or uh or do we use it for power? Um this is really more of a conversation about uh actually uh getting the the uh uh meeting the FERC requirements for safety at the moment. Um in the electric system, uh wildfire mitigation um is is a piece, electrification, aging infrastructure. is, is a piece electrification, aging infrastructure. There's a lot of power prices, don't really have much to do with this, but it's all intertwined. I keep hearing about all these opportunities, 2.3 trillion dollars in infrastructure money. It sounds pretty exciting. We are starting to see if we can tap into some of that and look into it. And I mentioned inflation. I, I think that's going to be a serious problem for, for a lot of folks, not just our capital plan. Next slide, please. So with that, I'm just going to ask Tyler and Wally to join us and hopefully they can answer any questions that you've come up with. No questions. Excellent. I've covered it.
I guess I have just a question. I mean, you briefly touched on the potential infrastructure money. Right? That would be a lot of money if that goes through. And how would we, how would we prioritize or I don't know, decide what to do because it would, I mean, it could be a windfall. Yeah, Frank.
Yeah, President Schlossberg, I'm not, I'm not going to get into the, the decisions that would be made around priorities that, that maybe Tyler and Wally want to weigh into. I will say some of that money is going to come in, into categories. So for example, they might tie funding to resiliency, for example, and which would be a great opportunity to help fund a second drinking water source, for example. So some of them might be predicated based on the kinds of, of money that's available. Undergrounding electric wires for wildfire mitigation is another example where they could tie it to certain kinds of restricted projects. I have a feeling that we have more projects than we could ever fund probably. I mean, we, we have almost 1.125 billion dollars worth of assets of which those are on various cycles. I see this as an infu, kind of an opportunistic infusion. But then we also have to match that with resources and processes and systems to be able to execute. So it's, I, I think we are going to have to be selective, even though there's going to be this really wonderful looking Christmas present out there that we go, let's, you know, let's just go nuts with it. I, I think we are going to have to be selective in, in how we do that and, and look for certain priorities that, that maybe we wouldn't do otherwise. I don't know if Rod, if you or Tyler or Wally want to elaborate on that, but I, that's how I see it.
Yeah, I, I pretty much agree. And I think that, and that's why I wanted to emphasize the, the risk category and the strategic and some of these things because we you know, we talked about even the second treatment plant having the ability to do some funding. I've talked to the city about I think the co-owners of this thing, Nikabaka Bridge, where we have a, one of our main transmission water lines goes across. It's not seismic or stable. So there's some opportunities for some joint projects as well. So we'll be looking to try and, and watch out for, for opportunities as much as anything.
Yeah, President Schlossberg, I actually think our strategic plan aligns really well with the areas that are, are potentially target funding areas. You know, the other one is anything that might facilitate grid modernization that can facilitate the integration of more renewables, for example, so demand response, distributed generation, and those kinds of things that anything we can do to our system that facilitates that. And that's one of our two big ones, along with resiliency. And so I think both of the sort of the big issues that I think we deal with will align pretty well with a, what I'm hearing are some of the target areas for the infrastructure parts of the 2.3 trillion. There's, there's all kinds of other things as well going, going on in that, that sort of proposed bill. But those are the ones that I think align quite well with our strategy.
Great. Thank you. Matt.
Thanks, Mindy. Thank you, Rod, for the presentation and for the, the materials to help us get up to speed. It's really, it's again, great to walk onto a board and see the, the work that has been done. You know, in the recent past to improve the Hayden Water Treatment Facility, for example, that we're, you know, proactively strengthening that. That we're taking proactive steps while there's an opportunity to work on water transmission downtown to save money ultimately by doing things well, you know, while the, the opportunity is there. So I just want to say thank you, both to the, the board as it existed before I arrived and to the staff for, for leaning in and being proactive. It's it's really remarkable. And yeah, just thank you so much. The one question I have is about the, the compulsory spending in the CIP and specifically looking at the water side because that's where the compulsory wedge is largest. And my question kind of goes back to where Sonia was asking about supply chains. I'm sure you're all aware of the price of timber just jetting up. It's like crazy. And I understand that many materials will follow suit as people substitute timber for metal and likewise. And I just wonder if, if that is likely to affect the medium term, you know, couple of year prices of any of the compulsory projects that we have. And if so, how we might be hedging for that. I don't know how much flexibility there is within the strategic and risk-based categories. So that's, I guess that's another question is how much flexibility do we have there in those other two categories? And what's our contingency plan if we need one? If the price of materials continues to jet up over the next six months as it has been for the past two?
Yeah, that's a great, I'll, I'll start off with an answer and I'll turn it over to Wally so he could be more specific about the projects, but there, there's a lot of flexibility within. So the, out of $21 million, a third of it's or 20%, 25% is compulsory. And so those, when push comes to shove, that's what we prioritize very first for, for materials or and effort and labor. And, and that's exactly what we're doing in the example I gave with distribution engineering. We're, we're taking away from our risk base and strategic work and, and putting everything into our obligation to serve, make sure the customers get the money. But I don't know, Wally, do you have any comment on your thoughts on the next couple of years and how materials might affect it and how you're prepared?
Wally, I think you're still muted.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Matt, but I'll touch on that, but I wanted to touch on first what Matt mentioned about the water compulsory pie was so big in 2021 compared to electric. And the reason for that is, is we're considering our first base level reservoir, reservoir compulsory. And so normally ours is similar to electric on the compulsory side of about 20%, 18%, something like that. So this year it's, it's big. And next year it'll be big with that, that one first reservoir. But after that, it's more risk-based. And then there's flexibility on the, on the prices. A lot of our compulsory work is based on materials where we have like five-year contracts with suppliers. And that's really pipelines and services and materials. And so we have a little bit of stability there. And you know, one thing I want to note, people keep saying is you know, higher, higher prices, everything's high. And our last three to four bids we got were really low. I mean, way below our estimate. It's really been surprising on, on the water side on the work that we've been contracting out. So maybe, maybe we're just getting lucky, but but there is some stability and some flexibility to move things around in the future. So.
Commissioner McCray, I, I would, you know, that's part of the reason we started to classify capital projects the way we did was we, it was always this, oh, we have to do this, we have to do that. And when we really dug into it, the compulsories are the ones that, I mean, those are the have to do. If, if you don't do those, you're, you're going to not be able to deliver your products in the immediate. I mean, or you're going to go to jail or you're going to create some safety issue. I mean, there's, there's a really compelling reason. The strategic ones are the ones that if there was ever that kind of issue, we would have to come back to the board and say this, this strategic effort that you want to pursue, we can't afford to do it. Do you still want to do it? I mean, that's, that's the level that, that we talk about with the, with the strategic project. The, the risk base are truly flexible from one year to another. And so those are where we turn the dials. We also with some of them, you know, we try, we try to coordinate with city streets, for example, on the water side that, you know, that can kind of fall into compulsory somewhere between risk-based and compulsory. And so we really do, that's, that's a big reason. Your question was really a, a good insight into why we tried to classify projects the way we did. There has to be some flexibility, whether it's price, whether it's resources, whether it's, you know, whatever to be able to have and know if, if you can't do something, what are you not going to do? And also the other, if you get more money, what are you going to do? Those are, that's the reason we classified those the way we did.
Yeah, no, it's, it's helpful categorization. I appreciate having it laid out that way and thank you all three for the responses. So I have, thanks.
Yeah, there's, there is some lumps in the oatmeal as we would describe. You know, you get large projects to sort of skew this. It's, it's probably more appropriate to look at this, this across a five-year window as opposed to year by year, because you're going to see some shifts kind of between those categories if you look at one snapshot.
Thanks.
Other questions? John Borowski.
Thank you. So three things kind of jumped out at me in your presentation that I'd like to just highlight. So one of them was the realization about AMI and AMI is coming home to roost now and, and how are we going to deal with it on a capital side? You know, where are we going to put all these meters? What are we going to do when they break? Where, you know, those types of things. I'm glad that you're, you're looking at that and hopefully figuring out all of the idiosyncrasies once you start putting a new technology online and, and everything that that entails. So good luck with that. I, I'm glad that you're looking at it and keeping a sharp pulse on that. The second kind of goes to what Matt was talking about, and I guess it, it goes to the risk side. You know, I know, for example, that let's take a city street. You know, a city street can be at three different levels of, of needing repairs, you know, it can need, need a repair where it just needs, its cracks filled and that costs this much money. And then there's another one where it's a resurface and that costs a little bit more. And then it goes to the total reconstruct, which is like five times more than, than saving it. So I would assume that, that EWEB has that same type of thing, you know, this water main is 100 years old. We can keep patching it or we can fix it. Or we can fix it before it explodes. So are you looking at those types of things? And are there things that can get moved up? Because we are in a, a position, a financial position where if we move it up a year or two, it won't fall into the failure category? Question mark. And that's on both sides, electric and water. And then I have one more thing after that.
I can touch on our water mains a little bit. We, we do have a, you know, a kind of a complex strategy where we look at you know, prioritizing which mains we're going to do and which ones lead to failure. And frankly, oftentimes we let, we let mains leak time and time again, because that's the cheapest alternative and it has the lowest risk. Oftentimes if there's a 16-inch main that has one leak and worried and it's right downtown in a commercial area that would just create havoc, we'll go ahead and prioritize that main replacement over a small main in a dirt road with five leaks. And that we can still maintain reliability, but we'll just, it's cheap to fix. And so there's a lot of strategy and then coordination with the city on that. So.
Great. And then, and then lastly, kind of going back to what Mindy was talking about with the, the opportunities for the infrastructure money, you know, I know that back in 2008, when the stimulus program came out, it was like whoever had shovel-ready projects that were ready to go were first in line. And I think that we have a lot of things in our strategic plan that will dovetail into what like Frank said, will will be in there, but I, I just want us to be poised and ready so that we can take advantage of what we can in these projects to the best of our abilities. So, you know, having you know, being there early in the morning when the, when the grants go open type of a deal. That's what I did yesterday morning. The restaurant revitalization fund opened at nine o'clock and at 9:01 I was submitting my application. So hopefully EWEB is, is as quick on the trigger as, as a lot of other people, because I know there's a lot of communities out here will be looking for that. Thanks.
Commissioner Borowski, that's a great point. There's, there's a couple of things that I think help us as we, we do and have already a crafted strategy that probably aligns with the criteria of which this money gets allocated, which is good. The project piece is then a second part. And it also helps us that I, I believe this is a 10-year spending plan and it's not a one or done, all upfront spending plan. So there's some, some opportunities to, to look at some near-term, medium-term and longer-term kinds of, of of project-ready kinds of, of opportunities. So it, it appears like we will be well-positioned where it makes sense for us and, and yet not rushed, you know, not, not like you're doing it for a reason that it, that isn't good and doesn't align with your, with your strategy. I'll, I'll say there's a similar, what Wally described on the water side is, is similar on the electric side, but you know, we look, we look for the characteristics of different assets, you know, if, if Wally knows that there's a certain kind of material that's tends to leak or a certain age or vintage of pipe, that goes into the analysis. The cost, for example, with roads, it makes a difference if the city's putting in an 18-inch cement concrete road where we might not have another opportunity to do it. You know, that's a 50-year street. That's going to be different than, than a, you know, just a scrape and patch kind of opportunity. So we have similar, similar things on the electric side. Then there's, so there's the sort of asset groups that we look at, material groups. And one example that, that Tyler could mention is we're, we're looking at underground cables. There's a certain vintage of underground cable that we know is at the end of life. The ideal would be that you replace it about a week before it fails. That would be ideal. We, we aren't quite that scientific and, and good at that yet, but Tyler and Wally are working on it.
I think just to add to that, like Frank's talking about, we can look at the, the probability of a failure, you know, and that kind of, we can understand that through condition testing, inspection, age, and then the impact is also big. How many customers, what types of customers, what's the impact on the community? So it's kind of like Wally's talking about with staging up that planning. We look at the substation level, go down to the feeder level, much like we restore in a storm, you know, the, the biggest customer impact first. So we definitely have a, a pretty good gauge, I'd call it. Like, like Frank said, it's not 100% scientific in every asset class, but we definitely know our highest risk points and have that stack of projects that, that we can definitely pull on to start designing if needed.
And, and I think we are getting more cognizant and, and better as we go along, looking at our, our reliability and failures from a customer end and not necessarily our own end. We, we do know that the cost of an outage, for example, is different, whether you're talking about the Oakway Substation versus a substation in the South Hills, just based on on the activities that it supports. And so trying to look at the risk from a customer perspective is, goes into that analysis, not just every outage is not created equal, for example.
No, don't see any hands raised. All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So we are moving on to agenda item number 11, correspondence and board agendas. Frank?
Yes, commissioners, there were two items of correspondence. One was related to the Walterville Canal Flow Regime that we implement this. Every year in April, we do an assessment of the snowpack and forecast the flows for the summer. If those flows are below the median flow for, forecast for the summer, we go through a regime where we keep at least 10% more flow in the main stem or the bypass reach than we do going through the project. This is for fish attraction. Fish tend to swim toward more flow. And so even though this is not a requirement of FERC, we do this voluntarily based on our forecast for flow in the summer. This, this one did look like it was going to be below median flows, median flows. And so we're implementing our 10%, 10% rule this summer at Walterville. The other one was related to Jason's latest report from state legislative activity. I know Jason is on the call. If anybody had any questions about what's going on in Salem, this would be the time to shout that out and Jason can respond.
All right, questions?
Not hearing any. The, the board agenda piece of this, President Schlossberg, there's just a number of upcoming events. We have the May work session in a couple of weeks. That'll be a combination of, of looking at our wildfire mitigation, planning and kind of where we are, and also some strategic topics that I will tee up for the board around potential amendments to the plan and/or policy for your consideration. That's sort of the most immediate thing. Then we're still on track to do an upriver meeting in June. We also just have a number of board activities, including a tour of the Seneca facility and a, it's, I have to, big shout out to, to Ann Carr and Holly for trying to get the float trip arranged. This is, this is a logistical challenge and that's coming up as well. So the board and other, some other public officials that we've invited to float and see the watershed and, and fire mitigation and fire recovery from the water. And so just a number of, of looks like interesting and valuable activities coming up. Be happy to answer any questions. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
There, can you hear me? There we go.
I can hear you.
Thanks, sorry, I had to find the mute button. On the May 18th agenda for our work session, for wildfire mitigation, we have 30 minutes and I'm just wondering if we might want more time for that. I mean, I gotta think it's 15 minutes of presentation and that just doesn't leave us much time for Q and A. I don't know how much flexibility there is there to either move things around or make that a two-hour meeting instead of an hour and a half, but I'd just like to propose that we had, put more time on that agenda item. And then the other question I have is for the June 15th meeting upriver, it starts at six. Do we have a proposed end time for that meeting? I'm just curious how much time we have for the content that's there.
I will look at that, Commissioner. Usually it's a pretty set timeframe. We, we try to, and in this case in particular, because of the, the AV equipment, we'll have some more formal handouts. We will minimize any presentations. Those will just almost be the, I'll say, an elevator speech to let people know kind of what material is available and what we're doing. And then most of it is to respond to logo customer comments or questions and have a discussion. I don't know what that is set for. We had usually, I think, planned on about an hour and a half in, in past years, but we'll confirm that and set at least a target end date. It's, I think it's been tough for commissioners. If there's additional conversations, commissioners don't necessarily like to walk away from that. But it's also, there are some times when there's a lot more questions than others. So we'll, we'll make sure that's understood, but we're trying to minimize any presentation so that most of it is really for our upriver customers.
Great, that's good to hear, thanks, Frank.
And on the other work session, I think the way, the way that's ordered is that I think the wildfire mitigation is priority in that discussion. I will work with Tyler and Rod Price to determine actually how much of this is presentation versus background. And we'll see, we're really trying to gather as much from the board as we can around sort of philosophy and direction that we can use to guide further implementation. We do have implementation that we are presently, that is present, we do already. So this is going to be really a direction finding work session. And so, but it does take priority if we have to look and shift around and, and maybe even do strategy later, then I think that's probably a reasonable sacrifice.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you.
And I'll work with President Schlossberg and Vice President Brown specifically on kind of the agenda planning front there.
Thanks.
I think that's it. President Schloss, oh, there was another, just when I said that, sorry.
Is there a check-in, like if, if we're still in extreme risk at some point that we cut it or?
Yes, we, we proposed some sort of transition back to, sort of meeting transitions. One of them was, we're, we're planning on the work session like we did the last one. I think we're planning on a couple more virtual meetings and then maybe transitioning to some, some hybrid meetings. That is all predicated, you know, our, our policies across EWEB are based on the classifications for the county. And so, and we really don't want to violate those. So this is all pending those kinds of situations. I, so there needed to be an asterisk by this. If we're still in extreme, then it'll probably be virtual.
Frank, if I could, just about an hour ago, I think, all the counties were moved back to high from extreme by the governor.
Okay, all right.
And wait an hour, it might change again. Yeah, I would just, my, my response to you, Commissioner Carlson, is we, we want to make sure that we're adhering to the guidelines that are enforced and we have our own guidelines that are based off of that criteria. And so everything is caveated kind of right now with that.
Okay. Keep it posted, thanks.
I just want to make sure that people are okay with the, the hybrid, with the commissioners going in person. We don't all need to say if we are now, but I just want to make sure that people aren't feeling pressured to do something that they're not ready to do or not feeling like, I want to make sure if they are remaining virtual, but other people are in person, that they feel like they're fully integrated into the meeting. So I don't know how we decide that, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, I participated remotely last time and as you mentioned, Mindy, that technology was really seamless. And so kudos to the team for making that work effectively. So for me, I don't feel pressured to come in unless it's comfortable and, and really because the team made that so effective.
Yeah, completely agree. Do we need to let staff know by a certain date? I mean, I, I mean, I can just say, I plan to do the virtual portion until we get to September and hopefully, once we get into that mode, it will be more work through the system by then, but.
Sure. I think.
So far, I approve.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a lot of advance notice that we need, Commissioner Carlson. Even the last time, there was a little bit of uncertainty around whether Commissioner McCray was going to be in person or virtual, and that was fine. It really, we, we set it up to be as flexible as possible. If we go all virtual versus hybrid, then it's nice to know, you know, a day or two ahead of time, just so we can do some planning. But it really, the technology is very flexible and I tell you what, our IS staff and, and then the administrative staff that helps with this is, is done really a phenomenal job of being resilient in, in those kinds of decisions. So there's, you don't have to map out the rest of your year for us if, unless you're so inclined.
Any other questions for Frank?
Thank you, President Schlossberg.
All right, well, this is going to be a record meeting. We are on agenda item number 12, board wrap-up. Or anybody who would like to wrap up? John Brown?
Two things. Number one, thanks to the staff and everybody for, once again, having a great meeting and Mindy for you herding us along. Two things I forgot to bring up earlier today, in reading the, the correspondence, I'm, I'm really pleased that EWEB was able to make that home donation, especially to that particular family, that home we bought late last year and then donate that. That's really a good thing and I hope we can get some PR about that because that's a win-win for us. And then the other thing I failed to mention, historically, EWEB has cooperated with the people trying to remove the navigation hazards on the upper river because of the flow and things. And there's, there's a situation up there now that I was notified of today that the water's too high, but when, when the water, the time is right, I hope EWEB continues to cooperate to reduce the flow. So the Marine Board, the Forest Service and other people can get in there and remove the trees because there, there could be a real navigation hazard to primarily rafters on the upper river and make sure that we can help them get rid of that so somebody doesn't die because of it. So thank you very much.
John Borowski?
Yeah, thank you for the very smooth meeting and getting us out early. My wife will be happy to hear that. And yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what John Brown said, the governor did put back 15 counties to high risk from extreme. So that means indoor dining will be back available starting Friday. For anybody who likes to eat at local restaurants, that's a good thing for me. I think it's also, to be honest, I think it's a, a good thing for EWEB as every time we move down in categories, the, I think the, the COVID dip that we saw in revenues hopefully will be dissipated. So get your shots and encourage anybody that you know that hasn't had their shots to get their shots because that's the real way that we're going to get to, back to normal. Thanks.
President Schlossberg, I would, I would just comment, I don't know if people noticed this in the report, we did go into this year forecasting about a 5% decline in consumption based on just our general COVID economy.
Whoops, you muted there.
Sorry, I was right in the middle. We, we haven't seen quite the decline in consumption that we had forecasted, which is, which is good news. There's a number of variables though, just besides economy that do affect us, such as weather. Weather has a huge impact on, on both the electric side and the water side, especially in the summer for water. So, but it's, it's, you know, it's encouraging that the, at least the consumption, sort of general consumption, non-weather, or I'll say weather independent is a little bit, you know, it's better than we had forecasted. So I'm hoping that that continues.
Anyone else have anything to add for wrap-up? Nope, all right, well, I don't have anything either. So wow, all over an hour early, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, have a great evening.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mindy.
See you on May 18th.